Is Rhonda, has Rhonda joined us? All right. I now call the September 28th, 2021 meeting of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education to order. And we are expecting Board Member Rhonda Cheek to participate in tonight's meeting by simultaneous communication, but I am not sure that she has joined us yet via Zoom. So when she does, we'll notate it. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Does that move?
That was a motion from Margaret Marshall, a second from Carol Sawyer. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, the agenda is adopted by a unanimous vote of seven to zero. Colleagues, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege and ask that we observe a moment of silence to honor a beloved member of the CMS family, Dr. Eric Ward, and the powerful legacy that he has left us all. If you could just bow your heads for a moment. All right. Thank you. So we're now going to move on to some student outcomes focused governance work. As you know, this is incredibly important for us to sharpen how we monitor progress of the district, sharpen how we ask the right questions to get us where we need to go, to get our kids where they need to go. And so we've got A.J. Crable back with us to work with us on this, and I will hand the floor over to you, Mr. Crable.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wonderful to be back with you. Leadership across many different organization types and institutions has a few very common themes. One of those is that leaders who want to be effective identify a set of goals and then monitor progress relative to those goals to ensure that management is actually moving in the direction that the governing team intends. This is not rocket science, but it is also not necessarily easy nor intuitive. In order to lead effectively in this domain requires practice. That is the first of our agenda items this evening is to engage in practicing what it would look like to monitor progress relative to goals that the board has set. This evening, the goal that we'll be looking at is one of your former ones, not one of the ones that we've been working on together that we'll be moving with forward. You have a document that has been provided by your administration as a rough draft of a monitoring report. What we're going to do is we're going to use the other document that you all should already have a copy of. It's the progress monitoring student outcomes document. And what we're going to do is walk through that document step by step this evening to really dive into what are the purpose, the intention, what is excellence in monitoring progress towards your goals look like? Then we'll actually role play a little bit of that process, and then we'll actually go back and reflect on how well of a job did you do in monitoring? All of this articulated for the express purpose of continuing to grow your ability to be the caliber of leaders you intend to be. With that as our lineup. Read the monitoring, the draft monitoring report document. We will start. Please take a moment to review that paragraph. What is monitoring? Please take a moment to reread that paragraph. In a few moments, I'll ask you what jumped out to you from your reread of that paragraph? What is monitoring? Why do we do it? What is it about? What is something that jumps out to you from this first part of the document that tries to describe what is the process of monitoring? What's something that jumped out at you?
And I'm going to say for the public who may be watching us on Facebook, that this document that we're looking at is on Board Docs, if the public wants to follow along.
Was that Director of May or Board Chair? Go ahead.
What I observed in the document, there's a lot of verbiage showing progression. There's vocabulary words such as growth, progress, increasing, that are constantly being repeated, as well as the word sufficient being used plenty of times. So that is just emphasizing why we are monitoring and the importance of it and the cause and effect of it.
Yeah, this is a really important insight, is that monitoring isn't about checking, did we hit a home run on every single play?
And even if students aren't yet growing and making progress, that's only catastrophic if the superintendent doesn't have sufficiently aggressive strategies in place for increasing growth and helping students make progress, make progress. And then that number two, is their growth towards the vision. So I think that's it all, right there.
Yeah. Again, this has to be about creating a continuous improvement cycle. One of the things people ask is why does monitoring, you know, why does it matter? And one of the things we'll look into is it matters because if you want a culture of continuous improvement in the classroom, guess where that culture starts? The boardroom. You have to model what you expect to see throughout your institution. Anyone else? Something jumped out at you from that first section?
Yes, sir. So in the definition of monitoring, it jumped out to me that this wasn't just a performance framework, but it was actually an action plan as well. And so active monitoring, given this definition, is not only reviewing and inspecting what you expect, but it includes actually the doing in terms of the action associated with it.
Yeah.
So getting back to Ms. Ship's comment, you know, you have a very significant issue if there is not a sufficiently aggressive plan in order to achieve the goals. And that's different than just reviewing and having a performance framework.
As you're going to see on page two and page three, generally speaking, what we're going to try to aim for is, think of it kind of like carpentry, you know, cut, you know, And then reserve the last quarter of the time to get clear about, okay, now that we have a really deep and rich understanding of what. And both of those are absolutely vital parts of the monitoring process. You have to spend a lot of time looking backwards to get a clear understanding, to process it, to make sure that your superintendent, as your educational leader, has a clear grasp on what is happening within the institution. Because you'll notice one of the things it says, this is a conversation between the school board and the superintendent, not a conversation between the school board and Yeah. Because this is a culture. Sharing through your actions, your words, interesting, but people are also heavily paying attention to your actions. Every time this body meets, you are informing your staff, your community, your superintendent on what you value most. And you do that very clearly through what you choose to invest your time in. There's a lot about what you think is most important. Time in. Is what you value most. Student learning, aside conversation to be held another day. Let's talk about paint. Let's talk about astroturf. Let's talk about, you know, the pencil contract, the toilet paper contract, and the minutia that is necessary to run a district. But if you allow it to be the all encompassing behavior, the message you send is that that is what we as a board. We have to invest our time as a body. What is it that we value? And students. One clear way to demonstrate that. And your words will not. Either you will invest time, that would be the, you know, half of your time if you say it's the thing that matters most. And I reckon spending half your time on it makes some amount of sense. But either you'll do that, or you'll continue to send the message that all. That will probably make it onto Twitter and Facebook, and then they'll be this strong as, oh Lord, oh, we've got to, you know, Twitter said, we've got to pay attention to this, so we should probably pay attention to it. And in that moment, what you're really saying as a body is that we glorify a focus on these operational matters above and beyond a focus on are children actually getting an education in our classrooms? It is a challenging, difficult thing. I get that. I'm not suggesting it's an easy thing, this idea of focusing on the things that matter most. But it is an impactful thing if you choose to do it. Anyone else? What jumped out at you about how the monitoring beneficial? Yes?
Mr. Crable, the thing that stood out to me, and I'm pulling from the same section that Ms. Marshall spoke about earlier around communicating expectations, you know, I think the piece that stood out is around organizational alignment at the end of that sentence. As you just alluded to, we have a huge organization, and it's important that we're all on the same page, and on the same page, working towards the same goal. Because it is easy to get distracted, and one part of the organization could be doing really good work, and another part of the organization could be doing really good work as well. However, if that work does not bring us closer to the board's identified goals to improve student outcomes, then that's not our highest and best use.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. The idea of organizational alignment suggests that if we want to get the most done for students, that, you know, the adults have to be generally aligned in our behavior, moving in the same direction. What it further suggests is that what is undermining your capacity to really move with a lack of it in the direction of your goals, isn't that people are doing bad things. It is, however, that they're likely doing unaligned things. In the larger organization, the more intentional energy has to be put into causing alignment of adult behavior. If we're talking about, if the entire district was just the people in this room, we could cause organizational alignment without having to have a rigid series of systems in place to cause that. Because we can literally fit everybody in this room, and we can have that conversation on a regular basis, and then we can move with some amount of certainty that we're in alignment. But the more people you add on to that, the more intentional systems and channels of communication have to be created to cause that organizational alignment. It will not, your organization is too large to expect that it will naturally cohere to a set of values envisioned that you all have lifted up from the community. You will have to cause that, and a key strategy for causing that is spending time every single month, preferably spending as much as half of your time every single month, monitoring progress relative to student performance. Anything else about why is monitoring beneficial that jumped out at anyone? Anything else? Yeah?
No one else has mentioned the formative evaluation, so I thought I would, I would mention that, that it gives the superintendent sort of real time, month by month feedback from the board as far as performance, talking about alignment. It's aligning superintendent's performance with the performance of our students, and rather than save it all up for one conversation at the end of the year, it's formative feedback along the way.
There are a lot of thinkers in human resources world who are insisting more and more that more frequent feedback to employees is more likely to create the type of breakthrough performance and the pivot when we're going in the wrong direction is more likely to inspire opportunities to pivot and course correct in ways that are actually going to help us achieve our goals. Having a single annual evaluation of your superintendent is definitely an old school concept. Having more regular check-in with your superintendent is much more the direction I hear a lot of folks pushing. This takes it even a step further than that, and it says exactly this, every single month, let's dig into the work that the superintendent is doing to figure out, are we moving the district, are we moving our students in the direction they need to go? Every single month, 12 months out of the year, over the next five years, 60 times that you sit down and look at what is going on with our students. And when you make that a habit, you create more opportunities for people to notice when there is a misalignment of adult behavior, and that correction can be made. You forcing the issue of monitoring on the table in this room is going to require the administration to behave in ways that they have not had to behave. Doesn't mean that they aren't behaving that way, but they haven't had to behave in certain ways, because your behavior has obligated them to do so. Monitoring obligates the administration to start behaving in ways that then has the capacity to cascade throughout your organization. This is the value of formative evaluation rather than simply annual or even biannual evaluation. All right, so that's a little bit about why is it beneficial? Let's look at the next section, it's looking at tips, you know, for effective monitoring. Take a moment to review tips for effective monitoring, and then I'll be listening for what's something that jumped out at you? Yeah?
The no gotcha governance, that with a proper monitoring calendar, then there's an expectation, and so no one should be surprised if it's laid out and everyone can plan for that when the monitoring will happen.
Yeah, this is rookie politician drama. This idea that we're just going to spring something out here to see if we can, you know, catch, you know, the superintendent or catch the administration off guard. Like this is stuff that, you know, immature politician hacks do. This is not what folks who are actually trying to govern do. If you want to govern effectively, you tell people exactly what you expect of them, and then you aggressively monitor that on a calendar that is very open, very transparent. And inside of that, people are more likely to change their behavior. Think about it the other direction. If you do it from the hack way, where everything's a surprise, adults are actually less likely to change their behavior only because they can't adequately predict what behavior change might actually meet with the satisfaction of the board. The more predictive that is, the more they can say, hey, I notice if I make these changes and our students are better at reading, I know that the board will be satisfied with that, you know, based on what we've put in place here. And so I'm actually inspired and freed up to try to do the things that are in alignment with what the board said. If I never have an idea of what the board wants from week to week, and it's just totally random, it's gotcha, then I should probably just keep doing what I'm doing, because it's not going to matter anyway. Like whatever I do is not going to be pleasing to the board. And so it is, it's a fun game. Gotcha governance is, it's a lot of fun, and it looks really, really great on YouTube. But children suffer. Children suffer. Yeah?
Sort of in that vein of, in advance and not gotcha governance, about doing our homework, that was the very first point. So we as a board are going to have to do our homework and be prepared when we come here, and one of the things that, that I've learned over, overlooking at all these documents we've been given is that we're going to have to give our questions in advance to superintendent. They've got to be prepared for this, again, so we don't have gotcha. We all want to be rowing in the same direction, and I think that's important for everybody to remember, that we have to, A, do our homework, and give them questions in advance so that they'll have an opportunity to bring that evidence to us. Nothing like asking them something that they can't answer in public when they had evidence to show us. So I think that's important for us to remember.
Let me add one layer on this idea, is that during monitoring, you really want to have this strategic level conversation with your superintendent. You're not trying to get at, okay, so what are you going to do for little A.J. in this building? Okay, and what are you going to do for little A.J. in this building? You really want to take a system-wide view based on the language and your goals. And so it's easy to get into very technical questions. That's actually not the purpose of monitoring. It's easy to get into very tactical level questions. That too is actually not the purpose of monitoring. What you really want to have is this strategic level conversation about what are the big levers that we're pulling as an organization, and particularly the big levers that as a superintendent, you're going to need our support as a board, or our approval as a board to enact. And so it will be easy and seductive to try to dive into, okay, well, this is a school in my neighborhood, and how's this school doing, and so on and so forth? That is not district performance monitoring. I'm not suggesting you shouldn't have that data. You've never heard me say that, you're never going to hear me say that. If you, if the data exists and you want access to it, you should have access to that data. That's part of what it means to be a school board member. The only thing I'm describing is what is monitoring and what is not monitoring. And so if you want to have a conversation about a specific school, call the superintendent up, make an appointment, have your little one-on-one. If you want to have a conversation about monitoring, be prepared to come to this room and dig into how our system as a whole doing, not how our individual slices of it. And so, again, you want to have strategic level conversations, and it makes sense to submit those in advance if you want. But even if you don't, your superintendent should at all times be able to be responsive to questions about the strategy and direction of the school system. If he is not, that should be a red flag to you as a governing body. Your superintendent should always be able to speak to strategic issues. What is the big strategy perspective that we're doing? So maybe you're looking at data, and you're noticing that schools with these characteristics are lagging behind in literacy. The strategic level question is, you know, superintendent, what are you going to do about that? What's our strategy for addressing that? And he may say something like, hey, you know, we're looking for reading specialists in schools with these characteristics, we're going to push in, and so when you, we found some funds, asked for funds, we're going to use for this year, but next year, we want to maintain that, so expect there to be a budget item, you know, in our next, you know, budget discussion about why we're spending more money on these reading specialists. That's a strategic level question. The tactical version of that is, okay, superintendent, which, which classrooms is this going in and which schools? How many classrooms are going to get this? And how many schools? That's, that's much more the tactical level. A much more technical, you know, question is, hey, what is the curriculum, and who are the publishers of the curriculum for the work that the reading specialist will be doing with tier three students versus tier two students? Now we're getting into very, very technical questions. I don't expect the superintendent to know the answer to the technical and tactical questions on the spot. If you think those are important to have as part of the monitoring conversation, you should definitely submit those in advance, and then the superintendent can know to be prepared to respond to those in advance. But if you don't, then the super, actually, skip the superintendent, then the board chair should say, hey, hold on, that sounds fairly technical, it sounds pretty tactical. Superintendent, please put together a report next Friday and have the answers to that in it so all the board members can have it. Who has the next strategy level question? And so expect that if you want technical and tactical level questions answered during monitoring, yes, you definitely want to submit those in advance. But your superintendent should at all times be able to be responsive to strategic level questions even without advanced notice. We'll go here, and then we'll come over here.
I'm looking at the second bullet point under effective monitoring, where it says, and you have to understand the current reality as compared to where you're trying to go. When I, and when you talk about the current reality, to me, that sounds like that statistical detail kind of stuff.
So when we talk about knowing the current reality, you just want to know what is true for our students right now? We want to get to 80% of our third graders literate on grade level by June of 2024. Okay, great. Where are we right now? Are we at 50%? Are we at 40%? Are we at 20%? Like you are setting goals, and it makes sense that you have conversations at the level of those goals. That is always going to be in bounds. So for example, in the sample document here, it describes the percentage of students scoring level four, level five on the grade three, five, and eight ELA. This is a previous goal that is reflected in your strategic planning work. This is not the new version of that that you are moving to. So because that is a current goal, you should expect the superintendent to be able to speak to that specifically. Now, if you want to pull it apart and try to figure out, okay, so. okay, so exactly what's going on in AJ Crable Elementary School with the third graders on Tuesday, I don't expect the superintendent to know that off the top of his head. And frankly, as a supervisor, I don't want him to know that off the top of his head. I want his head to be full of strategy and how we're creating organizational alignment to that, not full of every single tactical detail. That's literally why we have highly capable principals to lead that level of detail to buildings. I don't want the superintendent's brain full of that. I want him focused on leading the organization, not trying to micromanage principals. Yes, sir?
So I'm noodling on the last point here, which is don't offer advice. So on the document that you were just speaking to,
Yeah.
you know, we're looking at actuals where we've got better than 70% of our kids not operating on the level that we want and frankly, they need
Yeah.
to operate. In some groups, that's better than 85%.
That's right.
So the conversation we need to be having is about strategies and expectations, which we had set. And we've got 50% of our kids behind where, where we had set those goals.
Absolutely.
And so here it says, you know, it's, your job as board members is not to provide advice to the superintendent. I guess I'm struggling with that fine line between advice and consultation with regards to, let me make sure I understand your strategy and what you need to achieve these objectives with that strategy. And oh, by the way, where do you expect that strategy to take our kids?
The good news is you all will stumble on this particular point enough during our role play in a few moments that we'll get a chance to see it in real life and so you can experience the distinction between those two. Trying to get clarity around what does the superintendent mean by strategy, totally in bounds. Recommending strategies to the superintendent for monitoring, that's not a monitoring activity. So again, if you have this great ideas like, hey, AJ Crable's got this wonderful reading curriculum, superintendent, why don't we use that? If you want to have that conversation, schedule your time with the superintendent, have that conversation. I'm just suggesting that is not a monitoring behavior. It's not part of trying to do a formative evaluation on what the superintendent knows. It's board members trying to suggest to the superintendent how to respond. And by the way, that doesn't help you know what your superintendent is capable of. I mean, remember the purpose of monitoring here, that part of this is formative evaluation. We're not here to give
How do you assess whether the strategy is?
As I said earlier, for your monitoring, you're going to spend about three-fourths of your time listening to the superintendent on what happens next, what happens going forward. And so if you hear, well, what got us here is we didn't have nearly enough supports for our teachers in these critical areas. I don't see how this is going to benefit my kids. And if the collection of you all look at it and you are completely and this process says, you have every right to lift that up as an inquiry. And so we've talked about missteps. What we want to do now is transition, like I said, you all have had these documents, you've had plenty of time to read them, so that's why we're not taking more time with it. What we're going to do now is proceed to the second page of the document. We're actually going to engage in a role play of the monitoring. For this role play, to at least off the hook, I will serve as the chair of this August body, partially so you can get a sense of what it looks like for the chair to lead monitoring works, some of the guidance work that you're responsible for as chair to try to make sure that things stay on track and that it stays focused the way you need it to. So all, in the role play, also the role as chair, and all of you get to be board members. And Ernest, we're going to let you play the role of superintendent in this role play, hoping you're ready to handle that part. So before we get, so I'm just going to dive right into the role play. All right, board members, next item of the agenda is monitoring. We received a monitoring report on our goal regarding third, fifth, eighth grade ELA. Before we get started in this, we have our four calibrating questions to make sure that we have the information we need. I just want to step through those quickly. First, does it clearly show what is being monitored? Is that, would you agree or disagree?
Yes.
You said yes, what is, what is it saying that it's being monitored in this report?
The outcomes of English Language Arts in third, fifth, and eighth grades, broken down by racial and ethnic groups and gender as well.
All right, got it. Next question, does it clearly show data for the three previous reporting periods, for the current reporting period, and for the target reporting periods? Agree or disagree?
Agree.
Where do you see that?
It has the, starting with 2018 scores and includes the 2024 goals.
Got it, all right. Does it clearly show the superintendent's evaluation of performance? What the superintendent believes the data means? Is there a label of some sort that gives you insight into what the superintendent's beliefs around performance are? Agree or disagree?
Repeat that question.
Yeah, when you're looking at this monitoring report, does it clearly show the superintendent's evaluation of performance? Can you find a clear label on this document that lets you know what the superintendent believes the performance toward this goal currently looks like?
Yes, it's labeled performance overview.
Performance, so there is a section here labeled performance overview. Got it?
Where is that, I'm sorry? Page one. Also the red, the red marking in the data to show.
There's also a red marking in the data for actual. And you're saying that that red is suggesting that something is amiss?
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Does it clearly show the superintendent's evaluation of performance? Okay, so I think, you know, there are some different ways you could follow this. However, I would generally say, no, not clearly enough. So I think both of the things that you lifted up are accurate, that there is a performance overview section and that there is some color coding. What I would hope to see is something that's much more clear with a legend that says, here are the different labels that we could apply to what performance could be. And of all those different labels, here's the one that we're selecting. And whether that's a color-coded label, a numeric label, a textual label, you know, we're on track, we're off track, you know, we're compliant, we're partially compliant, you know, we're red, yellow, green, we're one star, three star, five star, we're A, B, C, D, F. But some type of clear label that is going to be consistent over the next 60 months that says, relative to the goal, here's where we are right now. The fact that you all are looking for it and kind of coming up with different ideas means it's not as clear as it could be. Let us pretend for a moment that that is, however, fully ameliorated. Let's move on to the fourth question. Does it clearly show supporting documentation that evidence is the superintendent's evaluation of performance? I'm going to give some insights in the next steps. Well, where do you see that? I see some head nods, where do you see that?
Well, it shows, as far as the evidence, it's a lot of numbers, a lot of tables and charts. And then there is a section that's listed needed next steps.
Yeah. The only piece of advising I'd offer for the superintendent going forward is where it describes needed next steps, is I would try to be most heavily focused on a few key strategies that specifically are going to require board support or board action. So something that requires board support, hey, board, we're going to, you know, we've talked to a group of our principals and we've convinced a few of our hotshot principals to go from here over to here where the need is greater. I don't actually need a vote from the board for that, but it's probably going to spark some tension out in the world. And so I need, really need your support when this happens. So that's what it looks like, you know, if there's a strategic shift that requires board support. Board action, hey, we need to move an extra $30 million investing in this way rather than investing these ways. When it comes time for our next budget cycle, you're going to see that reflected. I'm going to need you all to take action to support that. And so generally speaking, if it's something that's going to require a lot of board support or require direct board action, try to prioritize those as next steps in the document. Yes, sir?
So a question on the next steps as well. In looking at those, would you expect to see expected results? Where you expect the dials to move when such steps are taken?
So I have seen some monitoring reports. I was just looking, working with another district last week. And in their monitoring report, when it talks about next steps, it feels like a really high-level project plan. And that, I mean, it doesn't go full Gantt chart on you, but pretty close. And that, you know, it says, you know, here are the big, here are the big strategic lever we're pulling and here's where we are in the process of implementation. And here's when we expect implementation to be completed. And so that, and so I've, that I've seen. Folks saying, we're going to do this, this, and this, and we expect them to have this much individual impact for the goal. I've, I've not seen that only because I suspect there, it's too multivariate to be that specific. What you do expect, however, is that when the superintendent says, here are our next steps, that is a superintendent's belief that the culmination of current practice plus the next step changes will in fact accomplish the board's, the next annual target in the board's goal. So yes, that, that is a direct expectation is that when you see the next steps, that that is the superintendent signaling, our current practice plus these change activities is what I, as your superintendent, believe is going to get us to actually being able to accomplish the board's goals on the timeline described. And if the superintendent doesn't believe that, then the superintendent should clarify that for you because that is what The good news is, that's a really powerful tool for organizational alignment. But it, it has to be used as such. It also means that you can't do everything. If the superintendent shows up every single month and he's got 57 brand-new things he's doing, you should be skeptical of that. At some point, going to accomplish these other ancillary objectives that the board may language around strategic abandonment at some point in monitoring cycle, you should be suspicious of that as well. There, there's finite resources and they have to be applied in a strategic manner, which means you won't be able to get everything you possibly want. All right.
First set of specific actions that are planned for first semester specifically around getting students back for face-to-face instruction safely. As I heard you describe, that these actions should specifically address Thank you for that question, Madam Chair. When I think about your question of who is struggling the most and why, the subgroup of students that I think about are Hispanic students. And, and so obviously, multiple groups of students are struggling. But, you know, I think about, you know, looking at the data, the actual data in comparison to, and I'm thinking about the chart on table, tables one, tables two, tables three. In each of those actual, you'll see our Hispanic students who are lagging behind their state counterparts in each of those grade levels, three, five, and eight. And so I would submit that that is something we are paying a close attention to. In terms of exactly why, you know, that is under exploration. And there's more work to be done to figure out exactly why that is the case. We have thoughts about that. I think that's, well, I'll pause there.
Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
As you look at this data, tell me more about how this is aligned to what is going on exactly in the schools in terms of, for example, school improvement plans and how they are impacting the change you're trying to make and even as you have given us the needed next steps.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Schiff, for that question. And so one of the items that board consideration for approval at an upcoming meeting this fall are our school improvement plans. And we are intentional about bringing those strengthening our is a celebration while we're also addressing the needs and helping them get caught up with learning.
Thank you. Yes?
So, Mr. Superintendent, I'm looking at the percentage of students. I'm looking at table four, who were tested. I don't have any previous years here. I can only assume that the number might be lower because of the pandemic. Can you confirm if that would be the case? And if typically, we had a higher percentage of students tested, like over 95%?
Thank you for that question, Ms. De La Hara. That is something that I will have to follow up with you on. I don't have that data at my fingertips, but certainly will follow back up with that data point.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes?
Mr. Superintendent, some groups of students had a higher performance level than others. And I know we had different circumstances this year than we've ever had in the past. Can you give me an example of something that did work for students? Whether it be students that were performing better than others? Or is there a strategy that you saw that did work across the board?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Marshall. I think what you will see in the data is that I think what you will see in the data is that, and we talk about this we know that those students who were in person overall than the students at Academy compared to model, which was a 4.1 percentage promote Academy to 30.3%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Sawyer, to your question, thank you for that question. And so what we have begun to do is my teammates on the academic side of the house have begun to look at this particular data point as it relates particularly to our Hispanic students. And what they've done is they have pulled together a cross-functional group to be able to examine why that may be the case. And not only why that may be the case, but what are some specific actionable steps that we can information and some specific action steps based on the root cause work that that cross-functional team is doing.
Or is that, you're still, I mean, is it, you know, access to great teaching or time in classroom? Do we?
We're continuing to work on what that is. And I'm not sure, Mr. Crable, if this is more of the tactical type of question, but I'm certainly happy to address it. I know this, so one of the things that we have shared publicly and have identified in this particular document is around increasing the supports for our families who don't speak English. We believe that communication continues to be a barrier for many of our families, particularly those families who do not speak English. So that's a very good question, and I will share with you that we have a number of strategies to, to address what you just described. And what you'll see on, beginning on page three and moving on to page four are just some of the immediate steps that we plan to deploy. Certainly making sure foundational skills, particularly years. And additional skill. And so we're doubling down on the professional development. I tell you, that's extremely important. We talk about some of the professional development opportunities that we're providing to, to help think going to that up earlier. We have to accelerate, but we also have to help kids get caught up in real time. And so it's not either or, but
Because you have those AIG students, for example, that have fallen too because they're in the same group. Some of them didn't come into the building at all. And so that would be the same. So what, you know, for both groups, we're having to look at what we're doing because many have that were here couldn't, didn't move. So I think that's important in both, both groups. We're always accelerating as much as we can, as well as remediate, but accelerating is important.
No, you're absolutely right. No student was spared during this pandemic, which is still ongoing. I don't mean to imply that it's over.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's take a pause from the role play for a moment. Just quick reflections, just off the top of your head. What are the things you noticed or reflections from the monitoring role play?
I was expecting you to have to redirect more.
Yeah.
I feel like everyone's on their best behavior and as soon as you leave.
That is, that is fairly normal. Fairly, fairly normal. In fact, one of the districts that I'm supporting right now, when they have their monitoring sessions, they invite me to be on Zoom with them. And then the board chair says, look, if you just need to kind of like voice of God into the meeting to, you know, redirect something, just feel free to do so. So every now and then we're like, that question is not monitoring. So yeah, it's, it's normal that when you're really as focused in as you are right now to be able to, to really behavior. About half of your questions reference the other half could have and generally did so, but didn't specifically say, hey, I'm looking at table one or looking at table two, table three. Similarly, it's the same thing with the superintendent about the majority of the time. He actually did a decent job of pointing to, here in the report, this is the data we're referring to, or, you know, look at page four in the second full paragraph, things of that nature. Like, that is a really helpful behavior to keep you grounded in what is the work that we're doing. And so definitely, that's an area that you did well in, but also an area to constantly improve it. Yeah?
I was glad to have the superintendent answering our questions. That's not our typical practice. We've often had, you know, our various staff members who have expertise
on that. Then as a board chair, it's appropriate to insert, hold on, hold on, that feels a little bit
Superintendent understands that. I was afraid what the that all Latina families are second language families, which we don't.
Valuable evaluative information about your superintendent. Because now more insight into what does he actually think? What does he believe? What does he know? Your opinions are going to drive what he actually does in the field. And so it's valuable for you to know that. Yeah?
Kind of like what Ms. De La Hara part, our EL teachers, and being second language teachers adequately prepared to support not only the students, but many times they have to support the parents as well. So do we have effective staffing? So I found myself wanting to ask that, or, and I didn't know or say something about that. Was that a leading question? Was I trying to give an answer to that, or was it okay to interject that?
If there is magic that happens in public education, it happens, generally speaking, in the classroom between the learner and the educator. And so I find it hard to imagine that you're going to get through many monitoring conversations that don't at some point have a what is happening between the learner, you know, and the stations about how, what does the superintendent believe regarding how we support our learners and our educators? Them. I suspect for the goals that you all are leaning toward, it's going to be hard to get through many monitoring sessions without questions of that nature coming up. Question, statements board during effective this monitoring report before tonight, please raise your hand. All right. So we've got, so we could, I won't, but we could ask people to raise their that you have some who did and some who didn't. Either way, that could still land, depending on your opinion on the matter, that could land you at approaching, or that could land you ineffective. The good news is, this is a really easy area to grow in. See, it's easy to get better fast. Yes?
I know that we said that we did not give our potential questions to the superintendent.
Yep.
Would we like for us to just email our questions to the superintendent? Should we email them to Ms. Elise and she gives them to the superintendent so then it's like not overwhelming?
This is a great procedural question. Madam Chair, what's the ideal process that you, that would work best?
Do you want me to? Not?
Certainly whatever works best for board members. If there should be one clearinghouse for that, for those questions, I'm certainly open to that. If you want to send them directly to me, I'm open to that.
Send them to the superintendent and CCR chair.
That worked for folks as a procedure?
I would, I would actually argue it might be better to go directly to Elise, but in terms of missing emails, we've so much coming your way.
Might be overwhelming.
I would just think
I can't promise that I won't miss some emails.
Well, that's true, too.
I'll, I'll just get a really good system set up.
Is there a, is there a staff liaison who normally receives these type of things on behalf of the superintendent?
There is, there is. And if I could, Mr. Crable, make a suggestion.
Yeah.
Perhaps all of the emails that are submitted should have in the title or the subject line a similar word, so it would be easier to identify those emails.
Word live, print questions.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
And to whom should those be sent?
And you'll send us an email with
Data and opinions. How did you score and why? Yes, ma'am.
I scored as highly effective because we were pre-worn, don't do that. So we didn't.
Yeah?
Well, I had us at effective, but not highly effective because only about half of our questions
All right, so we've got highly effective, effective. Anyone else? How did you score for data and opinions and why?
Effective.
Effective.
I, I would certainly join the what do we talk about? What are we looking at? So that way we can be on the same page. And yes, you can absolutely submit strategy level questions in advance and then ask them here. You don't have to appropriate to submit questions in advance and still ask them as part of the monitoring conversation. And let me say as a side note to this. Help people, we show people what we value by our investment of time. Let me be valued to having it as part of, part of the conversation, in part because of the kind of cultural creation aspect of simply having the conversation. It's also for that same reason that your administration has been the high-level overview, the data. And so this, the, the intention is to do the formative evaluation?
I mean, I do think we did a fairly good job of asking mostly open-ended questions, but I don't know. I just wasn't feeling like giving it an A on this assignment.
I thought some of them kind of got into, you know, maybe some
I missed, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I said it, I thought that most of the questions, we stayed focused on data, but some may have
Other reflections?
I don't know. I guess I just very many, very many, if any, future focused questions. I thought they were mostly on the data that was presented in the past and present.
Yeah, you all actually did a fairly good job in that regard. I, kind of similarly, I was thinking effective rather than highly effective, only there are a couple of questions that seem to be kind of straddling the line for me. And so when I think of highly effective, I think of, we are very clearly, we have mastered this competency already. And it felt like it was pretty solid on the competency, but not just completely mastered. Past and future. How did you rate yourself and why?
You stopped us at three-quarter time up and said
You know, it's helpful when you have, when you have that it didn't require, there were a couple of questions. A harder area. Your future focused question. Hold on to that. We'll come right back to that. What other questions you have that are analyzing kind of
Talked much about
Which strategies have been deployed?
Say again?
About what?
About decisions in the past.
Yeah.
Impact, right? So how do we learn the lessons of the past and then apply those to the strategies moving forward? We didn't, we didn't talk much about our decisions in the past.
Yeah. And so the, the thing I suggested earlier is think of this as measure twice, cut once. I did not feel like there were well strategic decisions that have been made and what impact has the superintendent experienced those making, kind of, you know, what'd you do? Link this back to the previous comment I made, in that it's perfectly normal and very healthy to have elements of monitoring conversations start to feel like a strategic abandonment exercise, where we're really interrogating, hey? We have very, very healthy thing to hear in a monitoring conversation. But sometimes to get I definitely didn't experience a heavy nudge in that regard. This is absolutely the appropriate occasion to dig into the superintendent's sense of where have we been? Have we come here and what worked, what didn't work? All of those are inbound questions. They're literally on the page that you've been provided. That's a good indicator to you that they are fair questions to ask. Other reflections on past and future? All right. And then the last domain, progress monitoring and project management. How did you score yourselves and why?
I said effective. I thought we, we really were not offering advice. We, but we didn't really discuss system operations or programs too much. We were really more focused on understanding performance.
And effective as well.
Yeah, I thought effective, too.
Same.
Other than interrogating, what was the nature of the play? Like, we keep putting it on the ground and running it right up the gut, and it's going nowhere. Impugning the credibility or the character, the, the decision-making of, you know, any staff members. That's where I see it most often go awry. But I'll certainly reflect on that more and see if I can nail down in my own scene, and I would certainly award you against. Other about monitoring before we move on. Questions and comments about monitoring before we move on. All right. Well, congratulations on surviving your first round of practice. What you'll need to know about I'm going to play the trombone. If I want to get better shooting baskets, I got to shoot some baskets. If I want to get better at monitoring, I got to practice monitoring. And so my recommendation to you all is that we build some time in over the next to actually attending to are our students' learning as the primary
And the strategies that have been outlined here, we would expect to see in data in another seven months. Because most of this is annual data.
Yes.
So how do we have the conversation about the effectiveness of these strategies short of an annual conversation and understanding the impact of these strategies in a more near real time?
You are quite clever in noticing that this data is not useful for monitoring. That's absolutely correct. This is why is recurring, refreshed throughout the school year. And so where your goals are really based on annual guardrails typically based on if the data is captured in separate then that you would schedule that for monitoring. And so you'd all, you'd always be trying to look to target monitoring with data that is team get intensely focused on improving the outcomes of our students. And we do that first by setting goals, second by monitoring progress. Through, and that is your self-eval. I'm good to keep going. Do you all want to keep moving, or do you want to take a quick stretch?
I'm keep going.
Hey, I love it. All right. So do you all have
I think I may have given it too many.
You need one of these. This is a
Do we need the one that we filled out?
I am, I'm going to go back to the one I did if I can.
The one that we filled out or just a blank one.
So, so this is, this is what you're looking for.
Right.
If you don't already have it, you want to track it down.
Oh. Oh, I have my book. Oh, my laptops upstairs. Okay. Well, we'll look at it.
I don't think I got it.
We'll be looking.
Got it. Got mine.
What page are we looking at? Looking at self-evaluation?
All right. So in the same way that it's important for you to spend time monitoring the organization and your superintendent, it's also valuable to spend time monitoring yourself. Like we know is teachers reflect on their practice, they get stronger. As principals reflect on their practice, they get stronger. As superintendents reflect on their practice through goal monitoring, they get stronger. Similarly, as board members of reflective practice. And part of how you do that is you reflect demonstrate what that looks like here. You create a safer space that people within the organization get the idea that, hey, you know what? Being open and transparent and reflecting on our strengths and weaknesses, this isn't, this isn't a setup. This is just how we get better for kids. This is, this is just the CMS way. It's what we do here. That's what's at stake. Again, the practice of the board self-evaluating on a quarterly basis, this is about creating the culture that is safe for adults to grow in ways that help them better serve children. So in that spirit, there are six pages of this instrument. For each of the pages, you have four options again. What we're going to do each of these I think only is the practice round. Outcomes focused. How would you rate yourself for vision and goals?
I mean, we the October through December piece will, will be, you know, we can give ourselves some points, but right now it's just a draft. So I put a zero.
What are you thinking?
Zero. For the same reason.
Yep.
We haven't adopted them yet.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're on the path, but we haven't really completed this step. But before we accept the simple answer, which is zero, which I happen to agree with, as you're looking at vision and goals, what are some key items on here that you want to attend to over the next couple of months while you're doing your adoption? What are some key things you want to make sure that you do so that you are at that master's focus rather than get trapped at approach's focus? What are some key things that you want to make sure you do as a team?
We're in the process of
But what is equally important is that you actually do need to make choices, even when the community is make revisions is necessary, but ultimately at some point you're actually going to have to and goals that jump out at you.
Night in the role play of saying, no, that's an input, that's an output, that's an outcome.
Absolutely. And you're right. This is something I have to come to repeatedly. In just a quick nutshell, my, one of my favorite ways of describing this distinction is the board that was rightfully concerned about the performance of the African-American students relative to college and career readiness. And so they hatched on this brilliant idea, well, we should have a goal to increase the number of seats available in AP courses and entice our African-American students to participate in them. This is a horrible goal for a board to adopt, in that to achieve that goal, all the superintendent has to do to, that's not a great plan. So how about this? Let's have a goal about how many African-American students opt into taking the AP course. Doesn't show what they know or able to do. That's an output. It's the actually passing this course, you know, and getting college credit for it at the end of it. And that's when they realize that would be the student outcome. What is the measure which students know are actually able to do relative to this process? Not the input at the beginning of the cycle, not the output in the midst of the cycle, but the outcome. What is it that students know and are able to do at the end of the cycle? And so I keep that in my brain. There is a glossary. And so if you can jump after the instrument, the colorful six pages, then you can go to the glossary, and sometimes that'll help folks. Be pulling in years three, four, and five. And so just to reflect the operational adjustments that need to be made, that's why theetro metrics tend to expire in one to three years, even though the goals and guardrails themselves last three to five. Great catch. All right. Then let's go to So let's imagine that you had adopted goals and guardrails. What are some other things in monitoring accountability that you want to be attentive to over the next few months?
The calendar, the development of the calendar.
Yeah. So that calendar belongs to you. It is not the administration's calendar, it's your calendar. Why if it belongs to This is about data availability. Because exactly what you said earlier, you want that data as fresh as it possibly and the most useful insights from it. And that's something that the administration knows that, you know, that we don't. And so they'll provide a rough calendar for monitoring that you Calendar for monitoring that you all, um, that you all have selected. And generally, most boards follow the recommendation of their administration, but you may have reasons for, um, deviating from that recommendation. Other items in monitoring and accountability?
The, the green column. The board has been provided copies of unless required by law. Board's goals. So it's just separate from the monitoring. Like, once we have our goals, we should expect a document that.
Superintendent to have a plan and to have that written out and thought through and, and he has to even deliberate it on and, you know, put, put to writing. But what it's also saying is that unless the law says otherwise, you absolutely do not want to be involved in the process of adopting said plan because you don't want your superintendent to get married to the plan. What do you want your superintendent? So that we're thoughtful about our implementation, but then as conditions change that we need to replan, that is the mindset that you want senior management to adopt. Any questions about that or thoughts about this? Yeah?
Uh, so I'm, I'm conscious that this section.
Here's how the superintendent performed, and here's how the district performed, and over here is how students performed. That is all one thing. Um, if the students are not growing. Period. Is beloved by many. Great personality, great connection, great communicator. And yet, that superintendent, um, will be heading on down the road shortly. Any guesses why?
Not meeting goals.
Student performance is, is not improving in a way that, um, that matches the board's expectations. And those are exactly the appropriate accountability behavior that comes with the talent of monitoring. Any other qu- questions about this idea? This relationship between monitoring and accountability?
Well, would accountability look at, like in, under, um, in the green where it talks about, um, meeting student, um, the implementation timeline and implementation instrument? That's accountability, that there is a plan, but there's also implementation of the plan. And we're expecting that and holding this superintendent accountable for that.
Yeah, so you should expect that the superintendent has a plan, and they should be able to produce that. And within that plan, there should be some type of implementation timeline and some type of implementation rubric that measures, are we actually implementing this? Like, he should have a strong project management system within his organization. But that is not what you're holding the superintendent accountable for. That is a really important indicator, and it's a red flag. Like, if we're in the middle of implementation and the superintendent can't show you any coherence in what's being implemented, that is definitely a red. Wanted them to have a school improvement plan, but now they have something to iterate from. It's like, okay, here's the plan that we had, here's the resources that we've put in place based on the plan we had. Now here's a new circumstance. What do we need to pivot or adjust in order to account for the new circumstance, um, in our revisions? That's, that is the type of managerial behavior you want to encourage, and that's why you ask the superintendent, hey, let me see the plan. Um, but you do not want to get into the habit of saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this. Do we? Monitoring and accountability before we transition. This is the one where your board chair lifted up, um, a percentage of time being focused. What I submitted to you is that I would encourage you to aim for mastering focus. Of adjustments for you to pull that off. Any other questions about monitoring and accountability? Communication and.
So, again, beginning the, beginning the journey.
Got it. Uh, let's imagine you had your goals and guardrails all lined up. What's the next most important thing to focus on here?
That meeting student, uh, that, that number. Three hours.
Any idea why that's there? Why is there a suggestion that you should try to have fewer meetings of lesser length rather than more meetings of more length?
So our people can do the work rather than be in meetings with us.
Well, there's certainly that. A finite amount of energy that they're going to divert from their families to this each month. And you, as a board, have a significant say in how much of that time. This versus how much gets spent out doing other things that you'd want. At, at some point, you're gonna have to ask yourselves, how much of the superintendent's time do we want in meetings with us versus we'd really love the superintendent out in school. During instruction and, uh, extending gratitude to staff and say, hey, you know, I heard you're the best third grade, you know, math teacher we got in the whole district. They just want to come by, see what that grade instruction looked like so I could. Um, and ask, you know, the building administrator, hey, you know, who's, who's the strongest teacher? Supposed to be about. Um, and so all I did is went, watched the little, the miracle in action for a while and said, hey, thank you for. At some point, you gotta ask yourselves, how much time do we want our senior staff in these meetings versus out in our buildings delivering that message?
Noticing the. Just looking at. Three calendar days to mastering at least seven calendar days.
Like it's. We get 14 days in advance. Obviously, because it's here in the document. Um, that having it less than seven days in advance does not provide adequate time for board members to, uh, prepare, um, and, um, and adequate time for community members to, you know, communicate with their board members if they so choose. I mean, so.
And obviously with exceptions, would you say, like, I'm just thinking about some of our action items tonight. A lot of it is. Legislature, right? If that only happened a week ago. Hasn't happened, but you're just saying on a regular basis with regular board work. A lot of this has to do with the pandemic.
Uh, yeah, so I'm actually not saying that at all. I'm, I'm, I am ruthless about this. Um, you all may choose to be. You know, making the decision. Um, only execution. Other questions? Communication, collaboration? Yeah?
I think in the, uh, in our policy, I mean, I think we're already, staff is already looking at policies and, um, thinking about what policies that we have which, um, are overly. Dictating actions.
Yeah. The, um, the, the challenge that you're lifting up and that I agree with is that if the board is adopting policies that are, um, largely not required, um, and that are largely divorced from its goals and guardrails, the concern is. And so the more. Guardrails are not directly required by law, just the more opportunities that creates, you know, for attention drift. Um, and so, yes. Is that the board limit the capacity for attention drift? Like, if it is. Poison its pursuit of the goals. How did you score yourself for unity and trust and why?
Zero again. We haven't done the goals and guardrails.
Same question. Let's assume those into being. What's the next big thing that jumps out on you for unity and trust that you want to attend to?
The board operating procedures, that's in process.
Yeah, so you all are already working on that, so you're gonna get a big leap on this one as soon as that work comes together. Anything else?
Yeah.
And we also have a policy, or at least a written one, maybe it's gonna be part of that operational, um, new procedures that we're working on, but, you know, when a board member asks for information, it gets copied back to the whole board, and that's on the approaching student outcomes. I mean, we do do that, or I think there's a sincere attempt to make sure that.
At some point, we're gonna have to talk about committees. It's gonna be another keep, delete, modify conversation. That people read the unity and trust section of the document and start having major concerns about our exploration. Operation of ethics. So, if anybody wants to, if there are any elements under meeting focus that. My favorite approach for dealing with that, for elected officials, is to deploy the. You invite people to, you know, like, what, what do you want? Let's, let's imagine what you could have for your block, uh, that we could come together, organize, um, and try to get. Um, and so, you know, Ms. Johnson, she says, well, I wanna, I wanna stop sign right there in that corner in front of my house. Cars are going too fast. Got it. Why, why does that matter? Why do you care that cars are going too fast? Well, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood. It's like, why do you care if there are kids in this neighborhood? Because that's not. To the wants and wishes of the community. Your job is to represent the vision and values of the community. And so what that means is when folks come to you, you have an obligation to listen, and you have an obligation to try to understand what is the core value that they're expressing and, and that I am going to go advocate for on their behalf. But I'm never gonna promise Ms. Johnson a stop sign. I'm gonna promise her I'm gonna go fight to create safety on this block for these kids.
That's right.
I, I absolutely will commit to that. But that's the key difference. Questions on unity and trust before we proceed? Um, the last item of the self-evaluation, continuous improvement. The board will invest time and resources toward improving its focus on the.
We gotta finish those darn goals.
Now, I don't understand. Why is AJ so focused on us caring about what children know and are able to do? Like, that just seems unreasonable. This is a school. Yeah, um, it's always gonna be the most important thing. But let's imagine that that's sorted out. What are the other critical items of continuous improvement? Yeah, Sean?
Yeah. We're, we're still on zero.
Still on zero.
Right, because, because we haven't talked about them enough. And we don't. And so, that's, you know, that's the challenge. It's, it's too easy to go back and say we don't have goals. We've had goals. We've had goals for years. We just don't talk about them.
Yeah. Get better at attending to the needs of children. Yeah, um, and, and then again, this is the work. If you really want to be great at governing, first we get clear about what are the outcomes that our community wants for our students, what. We get aggressive about monitoring that and making that a focus of our time and attention each month. Uh, then we do all. Those goals and the, and do so in the context of our guardrails. Uh, we can get there, but simply having them and then saying we've done something great is absolutely insufficient. Yes, ma'am?
For the example that we were given.
Deciding where it goes. Um, it's a similar relationship between the board and the superintendent. The board has to describe as its goal, where do we want students to be three to five years out? And Uber driver right here needs to figure out how to steer us there correctly. And every step along that journey. And every step along that journey, as the governing body, I need to be looking out the windows, trying to figure out, hey, does it seem like we're getting closer to the goal? Like if I said we were driving in this direction, I need to have a conversation with my Uber drivers. Like, hey, hold on. This don't, this doesn't seem like we're going in the right direction. Like, help, help me out. And the Uber driver may have a perfectly good explanation. Hey, there is construction all along that obvious route. We're That is the distinction between the work of the board governing, which is saying, where are we going? And the work of the administration, management. Are we, are we in it to win this or not? Because to go back to this accountability piece, if the board's growth looks like this, when it comes time to evaluate the superintendent at the end of the year, I think you should probably have a whole lot more grace, given that it's hard for superintendent to outperform a dysfunctional board. But if you are showing significant upward to board. Okay, wait a minute, hold on. Benefit of having a score system in place for the board. Because then you know, hey, did we do our part to serve kids? Or did we set the superintendent up to fail because we've been flatlining? And to Sean's point earlier, having goals and not monitoring them has not been setting the superintendent up to succeed. Any other reflections on
And, I mean, I feel like we are probably taking too much staff time in this. And I'm wondering if there are best practices or
I appreciate this. No, the, I, I can't point to a best practice on this. So essentially, what she's noticing is this item that says, hey, maybe we should look and figure out what is the cost that the institution is bearing for us to function as a governing team each year? And figure out, do we think that that is right where it needs to be? Do we think that's a little bit too high? Do we think that's a little bit too low? And so one way of calculating that is to figure out, how much time are we absorbing of staff time that wouldn't ordinarily happen? So for example, even if there's no board here, they're still going to do, the finance team is still going to be involved in supporting annual audit. Even if there was no school board, that's still going to happen. So I would not say that is an extra cost attributable to governance. But if you have a finance committee, a board finance committee, and that goes away, then that is time that this is inviting you to weigh. And so, no, I'm not seeing a clear, this is the right answer, this is the wrong answer in terms of spend, but it is valuable to know what the spend is so then you can make the decision. Is this, you know, is this escalating rapidly? Is it declining? Is it right where it needs to be? Like, what's going on with it? It'll take you a couple of years to get some meaningful data points, but then after that, then you are in a position to make decisions as a governing team of, are we being efficient with taxpayer dollars or are we
About staff member time invested in preparing for attending and debriefing after meetings. What about staff member time spent on other board issues, like not specifically tied to a meeting? So a board, a board member is curious about something and, and it leads to a lot of time.
All, all of that winds It also have clear operating procedures that govern this. You should never be in a position to allow a single board member to dominate staff time separate and apart from the will of the board. So if you have one board member and they are eating up 20 hours a week of staff time with, with saying, I want you to create this report and create that report and create this report and conduct this research for me. Like, at a certain point, as a board, you all, that needs to be board decisions, not board member decision. But I, as a reminder, as board members, none of you have any employees. Right? None.
Corporate body does.
Yeah. None of you have an employee. You don't have an employee, you don't have an employee, you don't have an employee, you don't have an employee. The board, the superintendent does not have nine bosses. The superintendent has you know, create operating procedures around that which should not
Paul, a question. What would be your advice in terms of having staff respond to a particular board member who may ask for grabs of information? What would be your recommendation? You know, I recognize whether members, they are the leaders of our organization and it may not always be an easy thing to say no. And so how would you
Say in this manner, only the board does. And so again, to clarify the misconception that is commonly spread is no, board members are not the leaders of this organization. The board is the leader of this organization and that is a difference that is very important to be clear about. And so as a single board member, I don't have any authority to go into schools and start telling people, hey, you know, you should do it this way, you need to do it that way, you need to move this around. I don't have that authority. That's a board situation the board has to resolve and say, hey, look, as a board, we cannot, if there's any type of spirit of bullying or abuse of a power that's present in organization, no, I would not be relying on staff to speak to that. I would be grateful if they did, but I also understand, people got kids to feed. Like, thank God, all my kids are gone out the house and I had a pandemic, you know, emptiness pandemic, you know, but not everybody's in that situation. And so I'm, I'm always sensitive to putting my staff in a situation where they feel like they're putting their own family at risk trying to help a board be great when that's not their responsibility.
But I would hope they would, we would have created a culture where they would have felt comfortable telling the superintendent and then the superintendent can certainly notify the board. Right? I mean, it's one thing to ask something that they could pass through the superintendent and that's also
No, certainly. Procedure, it should flow up through the chain of command. Like any, all I'm saying is from a board perspective, do not rely on staff to help monitor your greatness. You need to have a intentional system in place to make sure that we
We could look at that quarterly.
Yes, you'll use that same instrument for, to look at your time use over the quarter. That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then the continuous improvement, we're just basically charting what we did
Just now, with a selfie valve.
As we go forward. Okay.
Yeah, we just, we've just tried to provide you some tools to just help you be reflective in your practice, that's all.
Okay.
Other questions or comments before I get out of your way? Yes, ma'am?
Well, this is not specifically about progress monitoring, but I do want that we've got a big chunk of work left to do, particularly with finalizing our draft goals and guardrails, as well as with our
This Thursday and your very own student advisors, one of the two co-chairs for that initiative. So just thank you very much for your leadership.
Brianna's, Brianna's having a national ripple effect already.
I will say one thing that I was particularly proud of them is that they, they've made this their own. One of their rules is that adults are not allowed. So I won't be there to tell you how it goes, but but I think, you know, them expressing that as leadership and then ultimately coming up with rules like like allowing this to be a space for national student leadership, but for one of your own from right here in Charlotte Mecklenburg to be a leader across the country saying, we don't have a student voice at our board meetings. Can you help offer us some advising on what it'd look like to put that in place? So not only a blessing to the students that she serves here, but a blessing to students nationwide. Madam, thank you for your service.
So Brianna, this whole time that I was sending you updates, you never told me that you were the one that started the whole thing.
I didn't want to be rude. But I didn't want to be rude.
Alrighty. Well, guys, let's transition to the rest of our meeting. We've got, we've got some policy first readings and I'm going to turn to board member Lenora Ship, Chair of the Policy Committee for the first Okay. Back to you, Ms. Ship.
State that one again, policy.
BG and BGE. For the first reading.
Okay, here we go. Had a lot of policies there. Policy VG, first reading. Members of the board, the item before us tonight is the first reading of proposed changes to policy BG, Board Policy Process. If approved, the modifications to the existing policy will create a more efficient process for creating and modifying items in the policies, the board policies book. The Board Policy Process policy was discussed by the Policy Committee at the September 21st, 2021 committee meeting and was approved by the committee on a two one vote. This modified policy will have a public hearing at our meeting on October the 12th, 2021 and October 26th, 2021. The board will consider approving this policy at our October 26th, 2021 meeting. With that, Madam Chair, I conclude the first reading of policy BG, School Board Policy.
All right. Thank you. So now we have three public hearings coming up on proposed policies GBS, which is social media, policy
Exhibit? Is that right? Hmm. E, excuse me. I was missing this. Thank you. Go ahead. First reading of proposed changes to exhibit BGE, Board of Education Policy Process. The modifications in this exhibit creates an illustrative document to policy BG.
Speaker who violates these rules. And with that, I call our first speaker for policy GBS, Social Media. And do we have any speakers for this hearing?
It's one, Mrs. State.
Okay. And there's Mr. Glenn Stevens. You, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Custodians, office, office staff, cafeteria workers, bus drivers and all other district These are the opportunities to address this elected Unfortunately, there exists within the CMS organization a vocal minority dedicated to maintaining status quo and even further eroding the community's apparent ability to, and willingness to interact with CMS. Without robust interactions, CMS has no chance of successfully and positively changing student outcomes. After all, who wants to be berated or lied about on a regular basis by these bad actors? Cities, schools, classrooms and educators. Tragically, a few are hiding in the shadows behind social media membership walls and working against the efforts of CMS and its Board of Education as they work to improve student outcomes and the district's standing within the community. No organization divided against itself will prosper if CMS isn't able to succeed in its core mission due to itself, our students Creating guidelines for the social media activities of the CMS staff is not about accountability environment and what and students all works to policy GBS, Social Media. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Madam Clerk, did we receive any emails relating to this public hearing? Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair.
Any speakers for this public hearing?
Madam Chair, there are
So, oh, and I've neglected to declare the hearing for policy GPS, Social Media, closed. And I will now a student advisor closed. And finally, do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk, for policy BEA, Board of Education? BEA. I now declare the public hearing for by law, BEA, Board of Education Meetings, closed. So next we have our consent agenda. Is there a motion that the board approved the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second, a motion from Thelma Byers Bailey, second from Carol Sawyer. Before we move to a vote, does any Board member wish to pull any part of this item for individual consideration? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands and say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? So Madam.
And provide rules and regulations for operating these accounts by CMS staff. The Policy Committee discussed the social media policy at the March 13th.
Speak any further to your motion?
No, I think we did a good job at really taking a hard look at this policy and getting it to a point where the whole Policy Committee agreed that it was a really sound social media policy.
I know, it was thoroughly, thoroughly, thoroughly debated in the Policy Committee. Any further discussion before we move to a vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Any opposed? And that passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. Now, we're going to move on to the action items that were triggered by Session Law 2021-130. And in each of these action items, when we go to the Board Q and A, I'm going to give each Board member up to two minutes for your questions. We won't count the response time, the answer time in the two minutes, but we'll each get sort of one chance for questions in up to two minutes. Don't feel obligated to use your full two minutes either. So first, we'll talk about recommending approval of Virtual Instruction Plan per Session Law 2021-130 before the Board acts. I will turn to the Superintendent to introduce this item and to make a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam. For the full virtual. And as members of our staff will present shortly, we recommend extending this option to allow medically fragile students in grades K through 2 to learn in a virtual environment. Continued dangers of COVID, the COVID pandemic. Our academic staff. From medical providers, as the foundational learning that occurs in these early grades is best accomplished in an in-person setting. With that, I'm going to call on Dr. Start with our virtual.
My hot take on me. Thank you, ma'am. So as we get, apologize for that. As we get started here, we first want to just take a few seconds to look at an overview of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's Virtual Plan, which is required to be submitted for any changes on before October 1st. You'll see here that there's 14 sections to this plan. Many of those are multiple choice, but they are listed here. So last spring, we came forward to the Board and we spoke about some, thank you, ma'am. And we spoke about an opportunity at looking at expanding our virtual school that we had here in the district, that we were offering a 912. And we spoke about what it would look like if we were possibly going to look at an elementary and a middle school to partner with that high school. So we decided to go ahead and do that and move forward on that opportunity. On June 23rd, families were notified via ConnectEd that we would be offering a 3rd through 8th grade option for virtual school. The end date was extended. We had it for about a week, two weeks that we had the original date. We actually extended that opportunity to our families because we heard a lot of concern from those families over the course of the summer due to the shift that was happening with COVID as we got close to the start of the school year. So therefore, we wanted to make sure that we were capturing as many students as possible, and we extended that to the week before school. On August 18th, all eligible students were admitted into the virtual school. Between August 19th and. Who applied were placed on a waitlist. And then also on September 3rd, 2021. For option for this, on the CMS website. So just once again, being very clear that we have a waitlist at this point in time of students. We also are allowing for students to utilize the medical transfer as an option on the CMS website that are in grades 3 through 12. So the virtual option proposal that we're bringing forward this evening is to expand down to our K-2 students with a documented medical or health condition that they may apply to the virtual school beginning on Monday, October 4th, 2021. This would be for placement at the beginning of quarter 2, which would begin on Monday, November 2nd. Families, we are asking them that between Monday, October 4th, and Sunday, October 10th, at 10:00 p.m., that they would apply for this opportunity. Applications must be submitted online via the transfer portal for students on the student assignment webpage, and a completed medical packet signed by the student's physician will be required. Applications received after October 10th will be reviewed on a rolling basis, and students will be admitted periodically throughout the quarter, following the same process. So at this point in time, we'll take any questions and also pass it over. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the viewing public, the date in the second sentence, Monday, November 1st. I think we said November 2nd, but I just wanted to clarify, Monday, November 1st.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Then I'm going to turn to Margaret Marshall for the motion.
Madam Chair, as permitted under North Carolina Session Law 2021-130, I move to adopt the Virtual Instruction Plan as recommended by the Superintendent. The Garden through. To the CMS Virtual Elementary School. Once enrolled into the virtual magnet school, the student shall continue there for the remainder of the 2021.
Sawyer, Ms. Marshall, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think this is a real positive step in light of. Earlier discussion, one of the questions we asked were what do we think worked well for students? And having them in person, we know is certainly, particularly for our youngest students, going to be the most effective way to learn. But we understand that some students have challenges that we really would like to be able to address and think we're addressing pretty well, frankly, in our schools. But we know that this is a difficult time. So for those students that have medically fragile conditions, I do think this is an appropriate way to balance safety and learning, and I'm glad to be able to offer this option.
Choose, or their families to choose, remote learning?
Of how we get.
Make changes, and that's going to happen even at the school level. We would hope that as we see the need for change, we make those changes. I think we want to continue to make sure parents do know this is for the medical fragile kids because there were many parents in the beginning just wanted a K-2 virtual option. So I think we had to distinguish between the two and then come to this. So, and I want to thank the staff for being here with this.
I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. So all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a show of hands. Any opposed? All right, Madam Clerk, that motion passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, our next action is to consider approval of the Remote Instruction Plan that will allow for the use of remote instruction days for non-COVID-19 emergencies. And before the Board acts, I will turn to the Superintendent to introduce this.
Thank you, Superintendent, Madam Chair and Board. This is our Remote Instruction Plan that we'd like to submit for approval. Senate Bill 654 outlines what is allowable as it relates. We want to be very clear here. These are the five non-COVID days that were included in Bill 654 that we're speaking about this evening. So remote instruction is defined as instruction delivered. Are unable to open due to severe weather conditions, energy shortages, power failures, and/or emergency situations. Once again, being very clear in how the bill was written, these cannot be used for COVID days. These are non-COVID days. So in this review, overview of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Remote Instruction Plan, there were seven sections to this plan. Many of these sections were an extension of one of the 14 sections that was on the other plan that we shared just moments earlier. One thing you heard me speak to was the Remote Continuity Plan. This is a plan that our schools will use for any point in time that their students have to transition into a remote setting. I will say thank you to all of our people that are on the instructional side of the House for putting that form together for us. It has some very, some great links for our teachers and our principals to make an easy and smooth transitions for our family. One of the things that they definitely outlined was through the Remote Continuity Plan was a preparedness checklist. We will have this posted on the website so families can go and see this. It's also being sent to all of our schools, and we'll also be able to share it with our families as well. But you see here that basically what we've outlined is what it takes for schools to be ready, teachers to be ready, and especially what does it take for our families to be ready. I will share with you quickly, just to make sure our public knows, any of our Wi-Fi devices that we deployed last year. Those Wi-Fi devices are being checked on right now. If they haven't already taken, this hasn't taken place, through our technology group connected with the technology individual at each of the schools to make sure that those devices are up and working. We have extended. Each of our elementary schools and 10 per each of our middle and. Return. So Students' Absences overview for K-12, Student Remote Learning designated by the school district. If a student is participating in remote learning due to the directive of the school district due to severe weather or other emergency situations, the students are coded as a 1R for remote, to be counted as remote. So that concludes our presentation for the remote plan.
Yeah, can you go back to? The one. To read it. Did that take my time?
Pardon? While you're reading it, I'm going to turn to Ms. Marshall, and then I'll come back to you, Brianna. Okay.
So I just want to, I want to talk about what you just. And then we purchased lots of hotspots last year. What, I mean, are those students? Had hotspots last year.
It is, yes, ma'am. Through the end of September, the services that we had last year for all of those Wi-Fi devices were good until we went ahead and extended those on for this upcoming year. I will tell you that Kay Hall and her team in technology have been very diligent in making sure that things are up and working. She shared with us not too long ago that we had less than 5% of damage or loss to our devices that we had, our one-to-one devices as far as our Chromebooks and iPads, which in a district our size.
That's amazing.
It is amazing for the amount of movement students were in last year, so we appreciate that. And so we do have some of those that are in reserve that we're able to use as well for anyone that may need one. We also do have some Wi-Fi devices that we still have from last year that we can also deploy as well. These are ones that we're just going. May need to go to remote instruction, which would also include any of these five days, that they would be able to deploy those quickly to those students so they would have that connectivity at home.
Want to have that connectivity.
I don't know if I have any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Your strain?
So Dr. Hayes, I want to make sure I understand. So the intent is to send the equipment home with students every night? In the event that a remote day is called, that they have the equipment they need at home in order to connect asynchronous or synchronous, depending upon however that remote instruction is delivered the following day or days? Is that, is that right? Is that?
That is correct. So one piece that we have to keep in mind there is depending on the timeliness of the cancellation or the time that we move to remote is really going to dictate that. You know, if we have enough time that a teacher can utilize the resources that have been provided by our learning and teaching team to load those pieces into their lessons, you know, we may be able to have, you know, a Zoom class, right? Which they're very used to doing. But they also have each one of those, through the continuity plan, actually what we're allowed, we were able to do is actually keep a lined curriculum. Many of the resources that we had last year as well that we're able to deploy to the students so they do not lose ground in the progression of the learning for this year. students so they do not lose ground in the progression of the learning for this year.
So my biggest concern is about effectiveness. The effectiveness of a remote day should, should, not, not we, because I don't think it's our call here, if this goes through, should you, Mr. Superintendent, decide we're going to have a remote day? Because I'm guessing that on the best of days last year. Everybody was remote. And so I'm looking at this thinking about a decision to pull one of these remote days where you've got a certain number of teachers that aren't fully prepared, a certain, an even greater number of students that aren't fully prepared to do teaching and learning. And that decision matrix and the criteria by which you would decide whether you're going to go with a remote day or a makeup day? Because we have those options, right? So we've built makeup days into the calendar, and we know how critical it is for our kids to be in classrooms, for our teachers to be in classrooms, for the most effective teaching and learning. And so my concern about this is really around effectiveness and how if I look at, you know.
Did you want a response or is that more of a statement?
So, you know, you got to. Remote or pull, pull a makeup day? How does that decision get made? And how do we make sure that people are as prepared as possible, knowing full well that it's going to be even worse than it was last year when we were fully in the swing of doing remote learning all the time?
Mr. Strain, thank you for that question. And so it's a two-parter. One, the effectiveness of a. Utilize a remote day versus a makeup day? And that's something that. The remote instruction is as effective as it can possibly be, but also take a look at pros and cons of going to remote versus using the makeup day and be able to come back and share information and best thinking around those two topics.
Ms. Delahara?
My question is, what is the communication plan to the, to the schools as far as the urgency? I mean, I know it's something that they're always doing, student family contact information, but I also know that it's an, it's a challenge, you know, with phone numbers changing. And I'm just wondering, do we have a concrete plan to make sure that assuming this passes tonight, that all hands are on deck to continually get that information updated so that we can make it effective to Mr. Strain's point?
Right, so schools use the first 10 days of the calendar year to make sure that they get those things locked in.
So you feel confident that we're?
Yes, ma'am. And I also know that our learning community superintendent says they're going and meeting personally with all of our principals at this point in time are also, they've seen this, they know how important it is to have it ready to go, and are double checking with the principals to make sure that they have an accurate count.
And do they double check? So let's say one of these is used for inclement weather, which presumably would be, you know, maybe January timeframe. Would they do that again, you know, at the end of the semester or the first of the year? It's an ongoing schedule that they know that this is a responsibility that they need to do.
Yes, ma'am. And usually, and once again, just many of our teachers are using the Chromebooks on a daily basis inside the classrooms for various activities and workloads that students have, descending home.
Thank you. Ms. Ship?
That too, because I know it is a real issue, keeping information updated, and especially right now where the. So I think that that is definitely a continuous piece of work that we, you have to do at the schools. So I would say that is still a concern as far as making sure that you have student information on file, and also this idea of them taking them home nightly. I know how the concern that you have when you're in school every day and to make sure that they come. That really happening on a consistent basis because how many. Tightly and hotspots.
I, I completely agree. I will tell you that there was probably a redheaded young man during elementary school that probably would have left this sitting on the desk at some point in time, so, and then got home with. Proven that it's going to work, but we do know that our teachers, you know, here's the thing I will say, our teachers, our principals, our leaders in our schools right now, they are probably giving not 110%, but 200% of everything they have every day to make sure our students have everything they can provide to them. And we have the teachers in our classrooms that are there right now that are doing that level of work to make sure that if for some reason a student has to go out, they're, they're doing, they're doing the, they're doing the tracing, right? They're making sure that all those things are done. Makes time. And so, but they're making sure in doing that process, they're also making sure that all of our students have every available tool and opportunity to learn for any reason that they may need to step away from the school setting at any point in time during the year.
And I agree. Thank you for that, because I know they're doing the work.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know they're working more than 110% of the time for the children. I just think I'm saying we're going to have to continue to remind because we're in a As opposed to last year when most of the time was in.
That's right. Every trace they do is a reminder. I promise you, they are on it. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to turn to Board Member Jennifer Delahara to make this motion.
Madam Chair, as permitted under North Carolina Session Law, Session Law 2021-130, I move to adopt the remote instruction plan as recommended by the superintendent and instruct When a school or schools are unable to open due to severe weather, energy shortages, power failures, or other emergency situations, and may be used for up to five remote instruction days or 30 remote instruction hours during the 2021-2022 academic year. Additionally, I move to grant the superintendent the authority to exercise this limited authority when necessary. The superintendent shall notify the board of any shift to remote learning prior to any public notification.
Second. So we've got a motion from Ms. Delahara, second from Ms. Sawyer. Ms. Delahara, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll yield my comments to others to speak first. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or debate? Ms. Marshall?
I think that while we certainly know that our stu, we want our students to be in school, our calendar is carefully laid out to handle religious holidays, to give our staff some workdays so that they can do professional development, they.
All right, we'll go ahead and. 2021, 2022. I turn to the superintendent to make a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll have two minutes, up to two minutes each. No questions? All right, I'm going to turn to Carol Sawyer to make this motion.
Madam Chair, as permitted under North Carolina Session Law 2021-130, I move to adopt the modifications to the 2021-2022 CMS Academic Calendar attached as CMS Academic Calendar 92821. The recommended change does not alter any dates on the previously approved academic calendar. It simply adds a reference that schools may transition to remote learning from in-person learning when schools are unable to open due to severe weather conditions, energy shortages, power failures, or other emergency situations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, a motion from Ms. Sawyer, second from Ms. Byers Bailey. Ms. Sawyer, would you like to speak to your motion?
This is, as the superintendent said, a technical addition to.
That motion passes by a vote of six to one. Well, good work, guys. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Ms. Sawyer, a second from Ms. Ship. All those in favor, please raise your hands and say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.